I was just introduced yourself to us.
Okay, we're going to gather this meeting to order. Thank you for being here, ladies and gentlemen, and some of the people that are here for special recognition. If you'd stand with us while Councilman Best does our invocation, and we'll go right into the pledge.
How's it, please? Please bless this meeting and all participants involved. Please allow all parties to be friends and professional as we conduct the business of our city. I ask these things in your name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Y'all just bear with me as I move a little slower this evening. I had knee replacement on Thursday, and I am moving at a little different pace than I'm accustomed to, and so will not be coming down front for pictures and that sort of thing. We do have some ceremonial presentations to begin tonight. We're going to just switch this on. Should I, should we adopt the agenda yet? Further down, further down.
After this.
Yeah, after this. We're going to switch and do our officers first because Senator Dugan is still on his way from Bowden, and he's part of the other presentation. Is that Sir, Captain Parker?
Okay.
It's always great to be able to honor our employees when they've stuck it in with us for a long time, and we've got four that have been with us for five or more years tonight. I'd like to start with Sergeant J. Sims, 15 years.
Sergeant Meredith Hobbie, 10 years.
Sergeant Hunter Edwards, 10 years.
Corporal Clark Cleveland, five years.
Is that it? No speech or anything, huh? Ronnie Tewksbury, she has a special presentation. Senator Dugan, perfect timing. We just did one little switch, and you came in at the perfect time.
Good evening. I was here back in May to present one of our West Georgia Regional Library Excellence Awards. This is our second year that we've presented the Excellence Awards, and they are meant to recognize individuals or organizations that help library services by advocacy in the community and across the state. Tonight, I am honoring a team of people. This is the first year that we have decided to have a category for governmental officials, and we could not let this first year of presenting this award go by without presenting it to our dream team. The definition of a team is a number of persons associated in some joint or action. Unity is strength. When there's teamwork and collaboration, wonderful things can be achieved. We are very, very fortunate to have the legislators that we do to represent this area of our state. They work across borders, across party lines, as well as across being in the House of Representatives or being in the Georgia Senate, and they work together for one common purpose: for the betterment of West Georgia. A couple of years ago, this team of three worked together for one common purpose, and that was to bring a funding for a new library building for Villarica because they had recognized the need that this community needed a larger library to service the growing community that we have, and so that we could provide the number of services that we needed to for the growing community. Senator Michael Dugan, Representative Micah Gravely, and then Representative Dusty Hightower were a force to be reckoned with in obtaining state funding for the new Villarica Public Library. When Dusty Hightower was first elected representative for the 68th district, he heard of the city's desire to get state funding for a larger library, and he set to work that year. He approached the governor at that time and learned that the funding would be years in the making. In 2013, when the library board had obtained land and a promise of local matching funds, Representative Hightower helped Clint Chance and I to get an appointment with the head of the Appropriations Committee, Representative Terry England. During that meeting, all three legislators voiced their support for the state funding for the project and explained how much it was needed. In that meeting, Senator Dugan stated, "If you pass the project in the House, I'll drive it through in the Senate." Even though Representative England believed in the project, he was not able to put it in the House budget. And when we appealed to Senator Dugan for help, he took the presentation that we had done to the governor's office at night and sealed the deal for the first $500,000 to be approved that fiscal year, with the remaining to be approved the following fiscal year. If it were not for the devotion and the support of all three legislators, the Villarica Public Library would not be the reality it is today. And so, this team was nominated for the Government Official Excellence in Library Support Award. I'm afraid that Representative Dusty Hightower, who's now Judge Dusty Hightower, could not be with us tonight because of a family obligation, but we do have two members of the Dream Team, Representative Micah Gravely and Senator Michael Dugan. Will you please come forward? And let me read the award to you. It says Excellence awarded to the Dream Team, Senator Michael Dugan, Representative Micah Gravely, Representative Dustin Hightower, in grateful appreciation and distinguished recognition of your hard work, dedication, and commitment to excellence. West Georgia Regional Library Excellence Award 2017.
Come over here.
Thank you. It's beautiful. Before we adopt the agenda, any changes, amendments to the agenda?
Madam Mayor Proctor, one possible change is that we've mentioned at the work session...
We have mentioned at the work session on last Thursday that we had a need to reinstate, renew the employment agreement for our municipal court judge for the coming year. His contract expired on June the 30th, and it's, I believe it's the desire of the city to renew his contract for the forthcoming year. I believe a copy of that agreement has been passed out to you. It's the exact same contract that we had with him for last year. Nothing has changed in it at all. So I would like, would ask that the council consider adding that in as item 1.4 under the governing body.
Go move. Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, any council updates? Okay, well, I would just mention how glad I am. I think this is the first official meeting for our new interim city manager, soon-to-be permanent city manager, Tom Barber, and just want to welcome you on board. Just glad to see you sitting over there. A lot of people have had a little bit of a shock when they've opened their taxes, especially for senior citizens this last year, and we don't want to make the assumption that everybody was at meetings or read all the newspaper articles or things that told of the history and how this happened. And so I've asked David Mecklen to please make a statement, giving a little bit of information to people who may not be aware of what happened and how we ended up in this situation, and how that could all be altered based on the ballot initiative in November.
Thank you. First of all, let me say I know there are a lot of questions that people have asked and are very concerned about upon receiving their notices from the Tax Assessor's Office and the Tax Commissioner's Office about what their potential tax liability for this year will be. The city's very sympathetic and understands that it's caused great concern to everybody. The assessment and taxation of municipal taxes is pretty complicated. I'm going to be willing to stick around after the meeting if anybody wants to talk about their specific situation and have specific questions about themselves. As to the senior tax exemption, that was first enacted by the city in 2004. There was an ordinance enacted by the city council that was intended to provide some tax relief to low-income senior citizens, and there was a specific income requirement that was associated with that tax exemption when it was enacted. For the first several years, the exemption worked well, but through the passage of time, things began to be skewed a little bit, and the senior tax exemption was being applied differently to residents in Carroll County as opposed to Villarica residents in Douglas County. So that was one of the first great unfairnesses of how that senior tax exemption was being applied. A second issue, which was even more important than the unfairness of the taxes being exempted in different ways in the different counties, and that was that it was determined that in Carroll County, it was not being, there were no income requirements that were being placed on it, so that essentially people who were receiving the senior exemption in Carroll County were not being charged any city taxes, which is another great unfairness. Based on a review of the 2004 ordinance, I looked at it and saw how it was passed, and it was my opinion, and it continues to be my opinion, that the senior tax exemption as enacted was void as being unconstitutional in violation of both the Georgia and the federal constitutions, and that they were being applied differently to different citizens, and also those exemptions had not been approved by a vote of the voters. In order for any class of taxpayers to receive an exemption on their taxes, any class that's given a break over another class of citizens, that actually has to be voted on, which ours was not. Consequently, I rendered an opinion to the city, because it would have been raised to us in a lawsuit eventually, is that our ordinance was unconstitutional and that it could not be applied until it was corrected. The only way to correct it was to have a referendum to allow the voters in Villarica to determine whether or not there was going to be an exemption granted to senior citizens and on what basis. Once we made that determination, we asked the state legislature to authorize us to have a referendum to grant, to have a vote on whether or not we could issue a exemption to senior citizens. It did go before the legislature back during this past term. Initially, we had thought that we might be able to get it passed soon enough so that we could have a, and a referendum this year that could be retroactive to January the 1st of this year, because your property taxes are based on who owns the property on January the 1st of each year. So our desire initially to try and solve the problem for this year was to have a referendum that could be retroactive to January the 1st of this year, and therefore would be applicable to this year's taxes. In the legislative process, we were advised by legislative council that we could not pass a retroactive law that would allow for a referendum for this year. So, the legislature, we've got two of our legislators who worked very hard to help get it passed this year, so that we could have a referendum in November on a new proposed senior exemption. If the voters in the city of Villarica approve that, then it will go into effect for next year, for the 2018 tax year, but there was simply nothing that could have been done despite our efforts to get something done to have it in place this year. So those senior citizens who had been receiving the benefit of that exemption in the past won't receive it this year, and very sympathetic to that, very sorry for that, but we've done everything within the legal power of the city to try and get it done as quickly as we could. So that's a brief overview, but I'll stick around afterwards. If you're here specifically about that issue and want to chat about it, I'll be glad to talk to you.
Thank you, David. Interim city manager, Mr. Barber.
I'll have a comment tonight.
Really?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay, all right, thank you. We're entering the time of the meeting now, which is for public comment. Public comment can be about something that's on the agenda, or it can be about something that's not on the agenda. It's just something you want to comment about. We do ask that you sign in, if you haven't done so already, that you sign in on the sheet, and also that you state your name and address for the record. Also would ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, and that allows other people to have their opportunity.
To the council, sorry I didn't sign in earlier, but I was late coming in today. Cheryl Bell, 225 Raleigh Way. Good to meet you, our new city manager, Mr. Barber. Tonight, I'm not going to talk about our roads getting top paved. That's not what I'm here for, as usual. I'm going to talk about, I wanted to talk about our code enforcement for our city, and I believe that the prior city manager, and maybe Mr. Mecklen also, was trying to put something together to put some, what they call teeth into the ordinance, ordinances, so that there would not only be an ordinance, but there could be fines or something like that applied. Because we have, you know, for instance, when you report someone's for their grants being over the code, and then we have experienced that, they, you know, they cut it for a little while, and then they stop, because they say, "Well, they're just going to come by and give me a notice." And I thought it was important to the city of Villarica to have city beautification. I thought I had read somewhere earlier that Villarica was expanding on its code to keep the city beautiful. So our city's going to be expanding, from what I hear, at least about 20,000 residents in the next 10 years, and I just thought that it'd be a good time to start putting some teeth into the code violations.
Usually when we're up here, we won't respond back directly as people are speaking, giving comment, but, Tom, one thing we are trying to make sure happens is that the people that do come up and mention something like that, that someone in the city does get back to them with an answer for their question, so that we have their name and phone number, or if you're even hanging around afterwards, and we're all here, and we can talk further about it. So we do want to answer the questions. Any other public comments? Going once, going twice? You never know. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Ms. Bell. All right, we move next to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is basically items that we normally would approve with little discussion, non-controversial items. These are all items that were covered in Thursday's work session, and by unanimous consent, the governing body put them on the consent agenda so that we could vote on them all at once. And these are the items. I'll just name them off briefly. Library Advisory Board, and that would include the reappointment of Clara Thomas. The Downtown Development Authority, there were two vacant positions, and staff had recommended the appointment of Kimberly Stovall to serve a full term, and for Ryan Clark to fulfill an unexpired term of a member that moved out of the area. Number three, the formal adoption of the Hotel Motel Tax Ordinance. This had already passed, but this is the formal adoption. The renewal of the annual agreement for the inmate work detail. This is the exact same contract that we had with them in the prior year, and we are very happy to be renewing this for an additional year. Also, our continued agreement with GDOT for right-of-way maintenance, this is about nine miles of roads, I believe, that the city maintains, and GDOT pays us for that maintenance because it's alongside the state roads. And the last item on the consent agenda is adoption of the Historic Preservation Commission bylaws. Do I have a motion that we adopt these things on the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed?
Did you have something you want to take on?
You know, several questions have popped up. I'm not sure the advisory board had voted for Ms. Thomas. I think she would pass, but I'm not sure they had voted for her. I don't know if Kim Stovall or Ryan Clark had been asked if they wanted to be on it. We wouldn't have told that during our work session, so, you know, just several things that, and that's fine, but it voted, passed, let's go.
Okay. I was going to just mention, I wasn't at the work session. I did view the video. I do know that at least Ryan Clark had been asked and was, he and both Kimberly Stovall wanted to serve.
But we were not told that.
I agree, we weren't told that.
I'm sorry that happened, so let's do whatever to rectify that so it doesn't happen again.
Yeah, we know that, but would they be here tonight?
Shouldn't be.
Okay.
Because they'd be sworn in next time.
Okay. Thank you for pointing that out. Okay, Community Development, Vicki Coleman. Janet Hyde!
It is me.
I'm like, did I print off the last... Yeah, and it should be you, but for whatever reason my agenda says Vicki. I apologize for that.
That's okay. Yeah, Vicki couldn't be here tonight, so I'm filling in for her.
Okay, all right, great.
Okay, the first item that I have on the agenda is item CU-02-17. It's a conditional use request by Sonia Tompier of Stewart's Village. She requests conditional use for use of goats, herding dog, and fencing on property located at 123 East Wilson Street, parcel number V060020009, land not 160 of the 6th District of Carroll County, currently zoned downtown commercial mixed-use. This property consists of approximately 2.94 acres and is in more than one. This request was recommended for approval by the staff, but it was recommended for denial by the Planning Commission. We did get a little bit of community feedback. I see two letters in the file from concerned residents regarding the goats. And since the work session, we've been provided with a letter from Dr. Stuart Burnett, veterinarian. He says that he spoke with Ms. Tompier last week regarding the goats and the two dogs that she will be housing at 123 East Wilson. He has agreed to be her veterinarian for these animals, as there was some concern about who was going to take care of those animals.
Discussion?
This is a predicament we're in. Staff recommended approval, the plan is on, and we voted it down 4-0. We have a precedence on North Avenue where we've already allowed goats to be in the city.
Is Ms. Tompier here?
She is here.
Okay. David, would it be proper at this time to have her?
Yes, normally we would have the applicant make a presentation to us, and then after that, to offer the public an opportunity to have any comments, if they have any.
Good evening. My name is Sonia Stuart Tompier, owner of Stewart's Village, Inc., and adult daycare 224 South Canyon Street, Villarica. I stand before you humbly requesting to be awarded a conditional use permit at 123 East Wilson Street. The purpose is to house Nigerian dwarf wethers, whose stature is below four feet. Nigerian dwarfs are not smelly and are quite docile. They do require herd dogs to aid them due to being defenseless and without horns. I came before the Planning and Zoning Board on May 30, 2017, and was told by the members their inability to see the density. At such time, I had a contractor to brush to accommodate the naked eye. Was also asked to return for the June 27, 2017, meeting to supply the board with specifics for fencing regarding securing the goats. I complied with the recommendations and presented plans per fencing stall. I am appalled at the condition of my property, and with such exactation and turning a blind eye to the use of it being used as a landfill. The land is consumed with baby strollers, barbecue grill, tires, chemicals and cans, and cement blocks. This past Sunday, July 9, 2017, while surveying the property with the contractor, paraphernalia was discovered: syringes, two small bags, spoon and a pink pouch, which housed a third syringe. I then proceeded to Villarica Police Station, and corporate file followed me back to the site and confiscated the materials, which he stated was heroin. This really vexed me to the point of reaching out to other doctors and nurses to discuss, "What if a child or teenager, or anyone for that matter, found this?" And please, let's not be oblivious to the fact... And please, let's not be oblivious to the fact that a lot of addicts carry their small ones with them and inject themselves in the presence of their children. My mind wandered back to the blind side when Hollywood put a spin on a young lad being told by his mother to close his eyes and only open when he was told. All children are curious. In closing, I'm reminded of Genesis, when God made goats for a purpose, and they were also spared when God commanded north, bill, and ark, and carried two, uh, two of each animal. My plan for my property is for maintenance with the goats until a senior facility would be built. This beauty now would not only enhance property, but would increase the street value. Anything organic is better than chemicals. Goat saliva breaks down vegetation, resulting in oblirations. Now, passing you the things that I received on Sunday on my property.
Hold on, look the same.
No.
Does any, anyone have any questions for Ms. Tompier?
Yeah.
The property, is it cleared or not cleared? The property, what's the purpose of the goats?
The purpose of the goats is to clear the property and keep the vegetation from growing back. If you look at the, the pictures there, the vegetation is growing back as of now, as we speak.
Ms. Tompier, how much did it cost for you to even apply for a conditional permit?
I think it was $2.50. Uh, I'm not clear, but I think it was $2.50.
And then, did you pay any additional money for somebody to put together those fencing ideas for you?
I did.
Do you mind sharing that, or a couple hundred dollars more?
No.
Okay.
Very expensive.
Okay.
Quite pricey.
And then also, you have done some clearing with a bobcat, because it was brought to your attention by Planning and Zoning, that some people couldn't see, they couldn't see the property, what was on it.
Correct.
And you did some clearing with a bobcat.
I did.
For hire, for hire.
Quite pricey, yes.
Um, David, would it be better to go ahead and go into public comment, and then revert back to any further discussion from the council?
Yes, yes, so, if, if they, if they're gonna call you back up, they will, but take public comment first.
Thank you, Ms. Tompier. Is there anyone that would like to speak either for or against this conditional permit? Or proposed conditional permit?
Hello, good evening. Kim Poore, 326 North Avenue. I'm speaking in favor of goats, of course. I think they're a wonderful, organic product to help beautify our city, just as Ms. Tompier said. Um, you know my feelings on the subject, I'm the original goat person that started this last year. My reasons still stand, um, up, I think, keeping chemicals out of our water system, keeping organics, not using machinery, and, you know, lawn mowers weekly to take the kudzu down. I'm assuming it's kudzu, Ms. Tompier? Uh, those are my feelings, um, I would think it would be a good thing. Thank you.
We do have at least one member from Planning and Zoning here.
Yes.
John, are you gonna speak on behalf of Planning and Zoning, or at least from your perspective?
Yes, from my, from my perspective. Uh, one, I'd like to clarify that, um, I, I'm pretty sure the Planning and Zoning did not ask her to clear the property. We, we did ask for details on the fence, there was no details for the fencing in the original packet, and so we were just concerned. Um, from my perspective, our, our biggest concern was the apartment complex, or several people live there, the owner and the head of the HOA, both were against it. Uh, we'd mentioned this last time we were here, and I don't know if she, uh, Ms. Tompier had a chance to speak to them, but I think that's the big difference between this and, um, the last goat thing we did. Um, there, there was some objection, but Kim had basically talked to everybody and basically got all of her neighbors on board. Um, the neighbors next to this were not on board, they, they did not, um, want goats next to their property. And the other concern I had is, is I did kind of walk the property, I did not see any kudzu, there is a lot of brush up there, but normally the goats are for, to give rid of kudzu. Um, at this point, the, you know, it's, uh, from my perspective, Planning and Zoning, the property's been cleared, uh, I think you wouldn't need chemicals, the goats are not gonna eat the barbecue grills and the rock and stuff, it just needs to be cleaned up and maintained. Uh, it's in, also in the downtown overlay, which makes it a little bit different than the other property.
Thank you, John. John Hannaback, you wanna say anything?
John's covered it all.
Representative Collins. Welcome.
Hey, how y'all doing?
We're doing good.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Glad to be here with y'all this evening.
You missed us, huh?
Glad to be here with y'all this evening. I just wanna come speak in support of my neighbor and fellow business owner, Ms. Sonia Tompier. Uh, she obviously had the, the land cleared there, that's adjacent to the property that I own. And, you know, the way I see this, it's very simple, she's gonna put a fence up, she's gonna bring the goats. Excuse me. I don't have a problem with the goats being back there, they're, they're Nigerian goats, they're shorter, they're, they're a dwarf kind of goat, and, you know, the property was grown up, and in, in bad shape. She's actually done a lot of improvement to the property. You know, when she purchased it, there were three dilapidated structures on that property, and she spent a good bit of her money to clean the property, get rid of those buildings, and, uh, you know, I, I don't see this being a real big issue. Uh, there's apartments that are adjacent to that. This is not gonna detrimentally affect their quality of life, their lifestyle, uh, you know, it's certainly not gonna affect my property at all, because she's gonna have a privacy fence that she's gonna pay to put up. Seems like it's really a, a no-brainer, I don't know why anybody would object to this, it's not gonna be a permanent structure. I think there's been some misunderstanding from the people in the community, or on the people's behalf in the community. It's not gonna be a farm, I mean, there's not, you're not gonna ride by there and see chickens and cows and horses, it's just gonna be goats. You know, I, I look at it this way, it's tainted property. It taint mine, it taint yours, it's hers. If she wants to put goats on it, let her put goats on it. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Anyone else? For or against? Okay, then we'll revert back to discussion amongst the council.
Okay, as I was pointing out before we get into the pros and cons, uh, we have a precedence on North Avenue, we allowed five goats. We didn't allow any herding dogs, but, um, I guess two herding dogs is part of the thing. And I don't see a problem with it personally, um, for a period of one year, because that's what we allow on North Avenue.
I was thinking along those lines, too, of maybe we would go with the, the one year, like we did in the other instance, rather than two. I really do understand some people thinking that, you know, the downtown overlay is different, and do we want goats down there? But what kept going through my mind is this is temporary, this is not a goat farm, this is temporary. It's a, a one-year at a time, in this case, Ms. Tompier had asked for two years, but if we decide to go with one year, because that's what we did for the other party involved. The other thing is whether it's kudzu, or whether it's foliage, or whatever, they are there to perform a job. I did read the objections, I think it matters, uh, what other people think, and I, I looked over the objections, what the objections were. I also did a lot of research on goats back when we approved yours, Kim, and learned everything I could about these type of goats, and so, our property value might go down, might be an objection, but it doesn't mean it's a valid objection compared to what, what the property is right now. That it might be smelly, well, that could, you could say that if somebody owed, uh, had several dogs there also, you could say it might be smelly, but is that a valid objection? And so I tried to look at those and, you know, weigh them. The condition that the property is in right now, um, could have some objection to it for the people there, because you don't know what's in those bushes, and, and I didn't know those pictures were gonna show up tonight. Um, or what creatures, and snakes, and opossums, and raccoons, and that sort of thing. It seems to me that what she's doing is improving the property, from the best I can see, and having learned an awful lot about those goats, and how quiet and peaceful and non-smelly they are. So, um, my only, my compromise was maybe we should just go with one year, and that's kind of where I stand on it.
Anybody else?
How many dogs are we talking about?
Two.
Two herding dogs?
I made my comments Thursday. Um, I do think these are two entirely different situations that we, we have here. Uh, ever since I got elected and, and sit up here, I've heard about how when these planning boards and these, uh, these, these boards, uh, make decisions, we should do everything we can to follow them. Tonight, we have a 4-0 vote from the Planning and Zoning Board, and we're considering tossing that out the window. The downtown overlay is different than where Kim's property is, and I had several people contacting me, and not one in favor of putting these goats over there, behind Donridge Ford, and the property owners, and I respect and appreciate that, that one showed up tonight in, in favor of this, but we have a number of them opposed to it. So, it, it shocks me that we're talking about putting these goats right there in the downtown overlay, even for a year.
Sometime I think, just the philosophy of, of people's property being their property, and if it really isn't harming anyone else, I'm real, I lean heavily toward people being able to do what they want with their property. There are cases where what they do is harmful to the people around them, and that's something we have to weigh. It is true that we are, um, going against what Planning and Zoning recommended, we are going with the recommendation from staff, that's kind of a rare thing sometimes when we've got that conflict.
We're going along with the recommendation of staff, because staff is going off of the last decision we made. When we make this one, if it's in favor of, it's gonna be very difficult to go back the next time someone asks for goats. It's interesting to me that we talk more about goats and chickens and speedhumps, we have more of a debate up here about those three things than we do real development that's going on. But, I, I've said enough.
Come on, Vernon.
Make a motion to, um, okay the conditional use?
For a period of one year?
For a period of one year.
With five, max five goats and two herding dogs?
That's what was asked, yes.
Okay, but it doesn't say that on here. I'll second it.
A motion, a second, all in favor? All opposed? We do have some real development coming down the road, we'll probably, we'll try to be a little feistier on that. Okay, uh, next one. Yeah, Janet, you're gonna, you might as well, maybe this one won't be so long, and you can just stay up there and take us through two and three.
This is variance zero-three dash seventeen, request from Ridge Line Property Group, uh, who is representing an applicant, Pandozia LLC, for reduction of the planted buffer from seventy foot to four foot, I'm sorry, from seventy foot to forty foot, on property located at 5820 Trade Center Court, parcel number zero-one-four-seven-zero-two-five-zero-zero-one-six, land lot 147 of the 25th District in Douglas County, currently zoned, planned development. This property consists of approximately 36 acres and is in Ward One. Um, the applicant is proposing to construct a 400,000-square-foot warehousing and distribution center that will provide for possible future expansion to approximately 650,000 square feet. The request is to reduce the landscape buffer, as I said, from seventy foot to forty foot. Um, a portion of the Douglas County properties along the boundary are zoned residential agricultural, which allows for both uses. The applicant's property abuts the rear, rear lots of the Douglas County property that are large lot parcels typically associated with agricultural uses. The staff recommendation was approval of this variance. Um, Planning Commission also recommended approval.
So, bottom line is, they want to reduce the required buffer from seventy feet to forty feet?
Correct.
I talked to at least one Planning and Zoning person on this, with a few of the details, and who has been out there to look at the area.
And the applicant is present.
Okay, um, we wanna give the applicant a chance to say something, and then if there's any Planning and Zoning members that wanna share their perspective.
Good evening. My name is Rose LePolt. I work for Ridge Line Property Group. Uh, home address is 211 Vinings Forest Circle, Smyrna, Georgia, 30080. Uh, we have a client that has been looking for a building of this size, their threshold is 650,000 square feet total, total build-out. They've looked all along the I-20 corridor. Uh, we were able to put this land under contract through Pandozia, which is the Toronto Baking Company, they own that, 36 acres. Um, this client really wants to be in this corridor, they like this site, they are ready to sign on the dotted line if we can get this buffer variance. Um, we have employed a civil engineer to see if there's any way that we could get to 650, and this is the only way we can get to it. A portion of the property, the upper third of it abuts heavy commercial, which is a 35-foot buffer, and we're offering to make that 40 feet, if we can get the rest at 40.
Okay.
Uh, question, as I understand it, this bring in about 100 jobs, this business?
The parking lot is sized for 200 cars, they're committed to 60 to 70 new jobs, and then other jobs will be coming in either from other, other locations that'll be coming to the Villa Rica area. So, um, total build-out is 150 to 200. And is a, a client that everyone would recognize, so, I just can't say it, or I'll lose my job, so.
Don't do that.
Hi, Ms. Hyde?
I'm sir.
Are you finished?
Yes.
That confidentiality matters, doesn't it?
What was we have before, George?
What do you mean, George?
The company that moved in with Kurt Kraft.
Oh, we gave them a name? Yeah, we gave them.
Kurt Kraft and them give them.
A code name.
Yes, I don't know the code name for this project.
Uh, the, the reduction of, of footage from 70 to 40, is that one that's closest to the interstate?
Yes.
Or nothing else can be built there anyway?
It's on the south side, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody from Planning and Zoning wanna share anything?
What was the vote on Planning and Zoning? Get ready for the vote.
Was it, was it 4-0?
4-0, 4.
Okay.
So, the, the, the main issue with the buffer, or the, the main consideration, I think, Planning and Zoning had, there's, it's about 500 foot to the back of the houses in there. The, the property that the buffer affects, it's a long, um, the very long lots, they're acreages, so we didn't, and no one complained, so we didn't see any effect to the, to the residents in the area.
Hold on a second. Do you have the picture we can put up on? Do you have the picture we can put up on?
I have it.
This one?
Move it up just a little bit, there you go. My question a second ago was about the property that is dotted lines, and is close to I-20. That's where the 40-foot was going to be?
No.
It's on the east.
It's on, it's on the east side.
North is I-20.
Right hand side. Okay, that's, that's the reason I have a question.
I misspoke, I'm sorry.
Okay. So, thank you.
Just want to make sure. Thank you.
Got it. Any other questions?
David, do we need to open this for public comment?
Yes.
Then, for any one for or against that would like to speak to this issue? I make a motion, we approve this request.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Unanimous. Item number three, alcohol beverage license.
This is item number ABL-03-17, alcohol beverage license, application for retail packaged malt beverage and wine by PFJ Southeast LLC, doing business as Pilot Travel Center at 95 Liberty Road, Villarica. The licensee is Stephanie Nicole Harris. She has passed all the required background check and other requirements for the alcohol license. And the applicant is present.
Okay. You know the little speech we always give the applicant? Do you have that, David?
I do.
Okay. Don't worry, we do this to everyone. It's just a rite of passage on the alcohol license.
I've had it in my name, like, several different times, moving from Pilot to Pilot. Never had to come to a city council meeting.
We're very demanding here in Villarica.
Wait until the speech comes.
Oh, my.
Yeah, we're very happy to have you here, and glad you're going to be the licensee if approved. Questions that we already always ask is, are you, obviously have been trained in what the drinking age laws are here in Georgia. You understand that the Villarica Police Department, although we don't have any present in the room who look like they're under 21, we do have some under 21, and they're going to be coming around attempting to buy alcohol from you, probably, at some point in time. And we just want to make sure that you're training all of your staff, that they go through all the proper procedures, not to get caught up in one of those sting operations.
Yes, sir. We have an e-learning module that will be going out as soon as we get approved for the license. And when they're going through the whole construction of it, because we have to add more color space, because this store never had anything like this, so they'll have to take the e-learning module before they can even sell the beer to anyone, so.
Okay, we'll just be sure and warn them that the Villarica Police are real tricky about catching people, so tell them to be on their best behavior.
They're always at our store, so.
You know, so we just want to make sure it's really clear.
So, I mean, I mean, the importance of it, I can totally understand.
So, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. See, it's not that bad.
No, it's not.
That's all.
Thank you.
I wondered why there were so many of our cars over there.
I know. I think Peggy goes double time in the mornings.
Any discussion?
Take the motion, accept.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed?
I buy your gas, but I'm not gonna do nothing. It's no reflection on you.
In 24 years, she's never voted for any alcoholic, at all.
Yeah, it's now personal. B1, drive-in and cry-in concert at the Gold Rush Festival.
Vicki's not here, but I was sent the revised contract. I think at the work session, I pointed out that I had some difficulty with all of the requests that were being made of us. The promoter was understanding of that and took out all of the offending provisions that I was concerned about. I did see at the end that we still do have to buy a cheese pizza and a pepperoni pizza at the end, but that's much better than everything else we'd been requested to buy earlier. So, I would recommend that we approve this contract if you're okay with the price.
So, that's why they weren't that demanding, is because of you? Because I'm looking at the contract going, oh, these people are pretty cheap, they don't require a whole lot back there.
No, they did, they did to begin with.
You'd seen the old one, you could play that.
Any other discussion?
I'll move to approve the contract.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the contract? All in favor? All opposed? Unanimous? Okay, now the fun part, finance. Sarah.
Did you mean fun, or? All right, this is our May financial update. This is five months of the year, and this first section is our general fund. General fund pays for the administration, the police department, recreation, public works, the streets department, that sort of thing. Our total cash in this department at the end, or in this fund at the end of May was just over 5 million, and our unassigned equity is just over $5.2 million. Those are our major revenue statuses, and in this fund is generally taxed, the first one being our local option sales tax. So far, we've brought in $752,000.
For $190,000, we can count that.
All right. Property tax, we received this in the, at the end of the year, so we've only brought in $108,000 of that this year. Occupational tax, we have received 88% of the budget so far, even though this is only through May, because we do receive most of it at the beginning of the year. We've brought in 352,000. Permits and inspections, we have changed the account structure for this, that's why it does seem like such a, we have had an increase over the prior year, but it's partially because of how we have changed the account structure there. But we have received to date $262,000 on that. Our budget was only $97,000. So, as we mentioned last week, there is room there for a budget amendment. It's not a one-to-one, that doesn't all go back into our bottom line, because we do have to turn around and pay Carroll County a portion of that for the inspections that they do for us. And at the bottom there, you see in total the revenue and expense for that fund, 11.9 million in both. Our revenue looks like it's behind our expense for the year, if you compare the two numbers. But in the general fund, a lot of our taxes come at the end of the year, or even at the beginning of the following year, and we book it back to this current year. So, our revenue is higher than last year, and our expenses following suit, it's higher than last year as well. Going on to our enterprise fund, water and sewer, our cash in that fund is a negative $522,000 at the end of May. This is part of the pool, we don't have a negative balance in our bank for that fund, but basically that fund owes cash to other funds. We do hope to have that, we hope to work to resolve that once we hear back from the rate study, and see what their suggestions are for us. We do have a CD in that fund, just over two and a half, not two and a half, but $2,058,000. And our outstanding bond principal there is $33,130,000. And then our unreserved, or unrestricted net position or equity in that fund has grown since '15, it's $2.2 million, which is roughly equivalent to four months' worth of operating expenses. You can see there our major revenues in that fund, water and sewer sales, both slightly higher than last year, 4% and 3%, which is good. And tap fees, so far, we've brought in $122,000. And then you can see our revenue and expense overall there. So far, our expense does exceed our revenue slightly, but we will tend to see higher, this is through May, so in the summer, we do see a little uptick in our revenue for that. Next is solid waste. This is our garbage pickup, recycle pickup, and our bulk pickup. This fund, we do have a negative cash as well, negative $316,000. And also, in this fund, unfortunately, we do have a negative equity, which we also hope to address after we hear back from our rate study firm. Our revenue is down slightly compared to last year. These are smaller numbers than the prior funds that you've seen, so when you see a decrease, it is only about $8,000 or so in a decrease compared to last year. And then, again, this, this fund, the revenue is slightly behind our expense so far in the year. However, our expense is right where it should be at five months within the year, so. Any questions?
When did you say that the tap fees are usually charged? I think you told us last month, and I forgot.
Yes, the tap fees are, should be charged before we start construction.
Okay.
And Janet and I actually visited after this, after the work session. She thinks that we need to compare, that the permits and tap fees should be more in line. I was thinking there might be a timing difference, so she and I will get together and take a look at that.
Okay, because I was just, I was thinking with all the building going on, that they would be up this year compared to last year. And so, that just caught me off guard.
Anything else?
No, the only thing, other thing I just mentioned, for those of you that don't attend the meetings regularly, is when we are talking about these accounts that are indebted to themselves in a sense, or indebted to the city budget, is we are working on that. She keeps referring to the rate study that is being done, and that's because those enterprise funds are supposed to pay for themselves, and they're not. So, the study is being done to help us know how to make them pay for themselves. And so, we are addressing that problem. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Item E, governing body, meeting minutes. Everybody get a chance to read all those?
Yeah, I have a problem with the May 2nd minutes.
Which one?
May 2nd, on page three of the May 2nd minutes, Community Development, A1, is RA0117. That's that property we rezoned, Dela, off of Liberty Road. It says we rezoned 45.73 acres, but actually, they came back, it used to be -15. They re, staff redid it, and they came back to us with two tracks. Track one was 39.08 acres, track two was the rest of it. We rezoned track one, Dela, the 39.08. We did not do the whole thing.
Okay, so, Alisa, you got that, that correction? Any other clarifications or corrections? Alisa, thank you for how you're doing these. They are, they're easier for us to get through and understand. I understand they're a little easier for you. Thank you, Mr. Macklin. All of us appreciate it. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from May 2nd, June 6, June 29, special called? Oh, and June 29, special called? Oh, I see, one of them is Woodstock, I'm going, why do we have two, two on the same date there? Have a motion to approve those minutes?
So, move.
Second.
Motion is second? All in favor?
With corrections.
With the correction? All opposed? Okay, item number, let's see, E2, the blue group agreement. Is that the right one?
It is the right one. I don't know who's most knowledgeable about this. It's my understanding that this is the group that we have used as our information technology providers for the past some period of time, maybe a year. I have looked at the contract, and I hate to admit it, but I didn't completely understand it, because I don't know all of what they are supposed to be doing. But my understanding from talking to the city clerk is that they are doing what we think that they need to be doing. And apparently, the price is the same as it has been in the past. I don't know whether or not there is any urgency in passing this, approving this contract right now, or not. If there's not, I'd be comfortable in giving Mr. Barber an opportunity to at least become aware of it before we sign off on it.
I read it today, the scope is very simple.
Okay.
So, if this is historically what we've done, then it's fine.
Okay.
But it's not a detailed scope for.
Right.
Well, we've only been with them for, is it like a year?
Like a year.
So, we don't have a lot of back experience with them. Prior to them, we had, what was the name of? Sylvie, okay? When I came on, Sylvie and we had them for a number of years. So, I don't know what to compare them to, and I would usually look to you to give us advice on, are we getting our money's worth? Is this who we should stay with? I have no idea. I don't know how everybody else feels.
Position to change, so.
Okay.
I think we should move ahead with it.
Okay, okay.
That being the case, I'll make a motion to approve this agreement.
Second.
Motion second? All in favor? All opposed? Okay, item number six, board sync agenda and meeting management software. Who gets to cover this one? This is having to do with the tablets that have been ordered for mayor and council to use, and the software that's going to be required, so that we're not cutting down 3 million trees, it feels like, every year with the paperwork, and we can update things very efficiently.
Actually, this is a company that one of our councilmen, Gil, checked on. We got the referral from Douglas County Board of Commissioners. This is basically an agenda management platform that the council, city manager, the city clerk, and the department heads do. It is an automated system that frankly, we really don't have right now. We've got paper going everywhere. This is a system that the department heads will log into, submit their agenda items. It is tailored to what our needs are. For example, when the department heads submit their items, we can set it up where it first goes to the city manager for review and approval, then it comes to the city clerk. It designs the agenda, say if we've got a last-minute item to add to the agenda and all, I mean, it changes that quick, there's, without all the manual tasks that we are doing right now. You know, it is our desire to go paperless, because of the amount of copying in colored ink that we use for you all to get your paperwork. If you check around with the local cities, from Kelton, Douglasville, Moonan, all around, they are already on an agenda management system. We're a little bit behind, because we are doing everything manual. This, of course, I'm definitely in favor of, because it's going to free me up to do some of the things that I don't have an opportunity to get to. For example, the records management is, it's very difficult to get to that, because I'm spending three or four days just to get council notebooks ready. And then if I have a last-minute item, I have to rush to get it to you. Well, you, as the council, you can be anywhere, anywhere. You can look at it on your cell phone, and if you took a look at the video I sent you yesterday, the platform is designed to where you can see the item, even on your cell phone, tablet, and your laptop, desktop, and you'll be able to see the entire page. It's like the agenda that you're having problems seeing on your tablet. So, instead of me sending you a PDF, I sent you a Word document, and you can see it. This platform, it doesn't matter what you sign into, you'll be able to see that. So, it is an automated system that we will all be using, and have a process in place, instead of emails being passed back and forth, and copies being handed to me, and sometimes, you know, in that shuffle, documents get lost.
Okay, let's talk cost. What's it going to cost? Okay, let's talk cost, what's it gonna cost us?
If you'll turn the page.
Forty-five-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars a year.
It's, it's actually an annual payment. When Chief Mansour and I talked with the representative, the setup was fifteen-hundred dollars and Chief was able to get him to lower it to one thousand. There's a one-thousand-dollar upfront fee and then I believe, I don't have it in front of me, I believe it's thirty-five, it's an annual payment.
He's got a gun in a bag.
But it, it is a.
So instead of mowing the pasture with a push mower, we're gonna have a big commercial tractor like Clint has to get the job done.
That's correct, that's correct.
That's all I need to know, okay.
Make a motion to accept, forty-five-eighty-eight.
Second.
That was easy.
All in favor? All opposed? It's unanimous. And thanks, Gil, for, you're kinda the one that pushed us in this direction.
I got a question. When do we see it appear? When do we get trained and all that?
Ask the clerk, she runs the show here. Okay.
One month, you said?
Be, he's trying to be realistic, right? Because we're also gonna do the budget.
Yeah, the next question is, where are we gonna get the money to pay for it? Sarah's got it? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Well, as far as I know, we didn't add any type of executive session.
We don't have any executive session, we did add an item there to reapprove the contract for Michael Hubbard as our municipal court judge.
That's right, thank you for reminding me on that because I was looking at the time and thought we probably should have a celebration.
Well, we can, we can still do that.
Any changes to this contract?
There is no changes and I will report that everyone seems to believe that Mr. Hubbard is doing an excellent job as our municipal court judge. We've had no complaints come in. Court seems to be moving at a more rapid pace than it has in the past and it's being operated very efficiently so far as I know.
Good.
I'll make a motion to approve the judge's contract another year.
First and second, all in favor? All opposed? Unanimous? Any other comments before I gavel this meeting closed and we start to celebrate that we're out of here at seven-eleven?
I appreciate that, it's seven-eleven.
Wait a minute. You need a motion to adjourn.
I move we.
Waiting on seconds, she had a motion, I got a second.
In a second, all in favor?
Yeah, then you can gavel.
If you're gonna hit it, hit it. There you go.
Have a good night, thank you. Thanks for coming. Didn't keep you all night tonight.